I'd like to call this meeting the Pension Board for the February 10th, 2020 order, and ask if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start off the roll call. Kevin Cunningham.
Art Daggie.
Tom Zinkowitz.
Kristi Henson.
Becky Hewitt.
Kelly Ashana.
And the last meeting is scheduled tonight. Could make it, so we'll go right into Item C, which is the approval of the minutes from the January 13th, 2020 meeting. So we have a discussion or acceptance?
I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from January 13th, 2020 meeting.
Motion? Second?
I'll just... I don't know if I have negotiations on anything.
Okay. We have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Understand. Item D1, which is old business, consider an act on retirement request from a town employee. We do have one request. If you have, take a moment to take a look through and see what it is about. Okay. Let me have that initial paper back, so I can read through it. So the request is at this time for a police pension contribution from James Solar. Date of employment was from May 8th, 2006 to November 21st, 2016. He still had a contribution, a full contribution, and he never requested a time to take it back.
Correct.
So his request is to take the full amount?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the full amount of $43,827.1 at this time, so unless there's any discussion on that, entertain a motion to accept the pension contribution distribution to James Solar in the amount of $43,827.1. Motion's made? Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there is no other at this point. Open forum, discussion. Intain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
On second, mate?
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And our adjournance is 6:48. All right, 7:00 PM, and I'd like to call the Board of Select meeting for February 10th, 2020 to order, and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call. Kevin Cunningham.
Art Daggie.
Becky Hewitt.
Item C, which is the approval of minutes from the Board of Select meeting dated January 27th. A chance to read through that.
I have no issues.
Intain a motion to accept those minutes?
Aye.
On second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, public comment. Anyone here for public comment tonight?
Sean Peterson. I was curious as to what the status is on the highway draw truth?
Yep. We are going to be putting that to bid. Specs are being done right now with a... They want to do the bid bond on that one?
Has the spec changed, or is it still the same?
Not yet. Kyle's here, but speak to that if you like.
Yeah, it's still the same.
And there was a problem with the one you approved, the bid two.
Yep.
How come it didn't go back up to the next bidder?
We decided we best to actually be fair to anybody to say what the bids should go back up to.
But is it fair to the other contractors now, because that contractor knows their numbers?
And they know his as well.
Yeah, his was a lot higher, wasn't it?
His was 174.
And that's 180.
No, when he was 3.
What was the next one down, 150?
No, the next one was up, higher than that.
The first bidder didn't bid, right? He did 75,000 dollars.
And why?
The next one did, was 183.
He didn't have a bid bond. And even for the bid bond, he could have refused it. We only get a little bit of money.
Okay. And we're allowing him to bid again, even though he did?
All three will bid again.
Yes. Actually, and anybody else that wants to bid, to bid. But we found it to be in the best interest of the town of Plainfield, which we deserve that right, so we're not allowed to bid again.
Doesn't the contractor in the town of Plainfield have the right to bid lower than the other ones and get it? I believe I heard something on sand one time. We bought sand, and several contractors bid on it. And the town of Plainfield wasn't no bit of a hider. And he still got it, because he gets a discount for being in the town?
You're talking about the ordinance, which allows us to have a certain percentage of...
Yeah, but it's just... Yeah, you know what I mean?
If a town bidder is within 10% of the low bid, they get the right to take it, not the 10% higher, but they have to take the low bid. Okay?
Now, particular bid... The particular ordinance is ordinance 110.
So when will that move to back up to the bid?
It already set up.
Tuesday, we're going to do the pre-bid conference on Tuesday, and we're going to open up the bids to fall for Thursday.
And the bidder understands where he's bidding on this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? I think none. We'll go into old business. We have none at this point, so Item D, D is completed. E is completed. Item F, new business. Item one, new business says, "Consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax letter totaling $179.19." You'll see that there's a Toyota lease trust of $136.69, and a Robert Byrne Senior for $42.50 totaling $179.19. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept this tax refund.
As listed as... I would second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, "Consider an act on adding members to the permanent building committee." We have received letters of interest from four different people, and I'd like to go through and read each one, so we make sure we've had that as part of the motion, if that's your pleasure. We have different areas, by the way, different areas of expertise which helps out tremendously. For the building committee, we have Sean Peterson, HVAC technician. We have Michael Paquette, master electrician. Ed Corson, who is plumber. And we have Robert Kerr, who is a former building inspector. So those are areas of expertise help us out tremendously. Anybody who's still interested, we'd definitely like to have more people involved with maintenance, so head maintenance would be helpful. Maybe we'd be...
Looking at me again?
And then, if possible, maybe even the fire marshal. I've reached out to him and have him reply back, because that helps out a lot in disciplines. So first off, before we even vote, I want to thank the people for coming forward, putting the name forward. That would be nice. It was fantastic to help to start this process out. So with that...
I'll make a motion. We add these four people to advisory building committee.
Okay. The motion to add four people to the advisory building committee is read previously, and I will second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, "Consider an act on a bid for the town real estate agent for the I Park remaining lots." As we've gone through the process of the I Park many, many times, we've had a problem selling those last few lots, and most of it's because of the difficulty in the wetland area which has contained all those lots. So it was thought that in best interest of the town of Plainfield to actually put that out to a real estate agent who, with an RFP, we put it out with an RFP to have an agent, real estate agent services. We received three proposals back, and what you see in front of you is a packet that talks about each one of those three, and each one came back with different numbers for percentages of what they would get. So with that, any discussion? You've got the packet, you've had it read through?
I do. The only question I have is, well, I know why Spalding was recommended. As being local, but as far as qualifications, as reading through, Lyman seems to have everything. This Spalding doesn't, so I don't know, other than being local, why they recommend it.
What was the issue with Spalding in particular? Would they not have as much of the exposure nationally or northeast region wise?
Their reputation, I guess. They were being commercial. I mean, it shows that they do commercial, yes, but to what extent? I think the prices were the same.
Except for one thing out of the prices. I'll get to that aside.
I think that was...
That was pretty much it?
That was pretty much it. They just seemed more... Boy, it didn't seem like Spalding, like it was Spalding. Their list, even, it didn't seem like...
Well, obviously, Lyman has done a lot more commercial, although...
Something that struck me about Lyman, because they would write on what the job was. It was I Park lots. They have somebody specifically in this area that knows northeast Connecticut, and they want to help develop northeast Connecticut particularly. So I don't know.
The thing that struck me different between Lyman and Spalding was that there's a COFE. Took a look at the details for COFE.
Yeah, co-broker?
Yeah.
Yeah. On Lyman's.
Yeah, and there is not, whereas he would take care of all of that himself with Spalding.
Yeah, they're going to split it.
Yeah.
Right, right. Do you know anything more about this? I don't know. I alter it. I just, I know the reputation of Lyman.
I can say that every one of the replies that came back from the RFP, there was something that stood out as missing, so nothing more perfect.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that the other, the first one didn't have insurance listed.
Yeah, so that eliminated that one.
Right. These two had the insurance listed.
Right.
So, okay, I'll go back to my original question then, is why did she state that? Where was it? Why is she... Why is she going with Spalding, just because they're local?
Local was one of the things of because of that, where I said 110 is about it. Because the prices pretty much match except for the COFE. And not that Lyman does a lot of COFEs, because it's what they do. So I was concerned with that. Other than that, they're pretty identical. I mean, Lyman does have a little more experience in the northeast.
Right. And with commercial properties such as this, because they do a lot of businesses, they buy this, that, so...
And I think that she also included the fact that it was ordinance 110, which is concerning the bid requirement.
So, okay, let me ask you, do you feel comfortable with Spalding?
I do.
That they can do the job?
Yeah.
Because it's a six month.
Again, six months. We can always change out if we want to. Those lots have been there since the park opened. They haven't done any selling at this point. I would suggest, my suggestion would be go Spalding for the first six months, see what we get. We can always go back out to RFP and put it out again.
So you look for a motion?
Yep. Intend a motion this time?
I'll make a motion. We accept Spalding for the Realtor.
So this is our Realtor with I Park agents for remaining lots. You've made a motion on second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next one is item four, which is discuss the Board of Education excess cost request. A little more detail of what they're looking for, but we have a memo from, this is a superintendent on January 2nd, talking about the more students that were placed into the district. We're not acting on this side, we're just sharing information to the public that there is an unanticipated special education cost appropriate for the Board, Special Board of Education cost, and an excess grant that will offset some of that. So more than willing to share this with the public after the meeting. The COFES for it, but there will be a Board of Education meeting specifically on this item, and then when they've finished with that, they will vote to bring it up to the Board of Finance to see if there's anything that they can do to help them out. Am I correct in that?
Actually, they already officially had that meeting.
Okay.
So the last remaining step is for, it'll be on the next Board of Finance meeting agenda for us to discuss an act upon. Send it forward.
So the number that gave was $342,255, unanticipated special education costs appropriate for the special education excess aid grant. So it's going to help them offset some of those expenditures. And those things do occur during the year where students move into the region, students move out. It still hasn't been something that the state of Connecticut has done to help any of the towns to figure out where the money follows a student, unfortunately, at this point. So each town is then responsible for coming up with the monies for expenditures to make sure that everything's covered. I'm hoping sometime in this next legislator session, a full session, that they figure out how to help each town and district. Until that point...
On his letter?
Yep.
And he stays, that he's only looking for $256,691.
Correct.
Yeah, 75% of that.
Yep. So the Board of Ed should request $256,691 of the eligible $342,255 from special education aid grant to cover the noted expenses. And that would be up to the Board of Finance, but they just wanted to bring it up to the public so that they knew this was coming. They asked us to move on their agenda. All right? Item number five, "Discuss an act on changing permit fees for the building official." And we do happen to have the building official here tonight, but for anybody who is interested in trying to figure out what we're getting at, there's a copy up here comparative to other towns. And the building fee comparison is that the town of Plainfield is pretty far under compared to other towns.
Yeah.
Okay, and we want to change the fees in certain areas, so if you would, Kyle, would you take a look?
Well, our current fees is, we have $15 for the first thousand, that's our minimum fee, and that doesn't really pay for us to get out of the driveway here to go do an inspection. So we wanted to bring that up to $35, and our current fee after the first thousand is $8.26, and we'd like to go up to $10.26, and that would bring us more in line with the other towns in eastern Connecticut. The last time we got a fee increase was 2002. Any questions?
There's a whole process that goes behind a permit fee, so if you don't want to read through what you gave me before?
Sure.
Okay. So the process includes reviewing the application, the plans if needed, making sure the contractors are licensed and have workers' compensation apped and dated. Go through the Northeast District Department Health and zoning permits if required. Go through the sewer permits if required, and any other necessary paperwork needed for the permit. At that point, you're going to go through all the information used to go and be entered into Vision, which is our online software for that. We have, so you signature from the owner and applicant of the building inspected as required in each permit. And then submit the money to the town clerk for receipt, and then, of course, you do the inspections at that point.
Yes.
Any failed inspection requires another inspection, and some projects require multiple inspections. All inspections have to get logged into Vision, put up with the original permit, and from that, you get finally to produce the certificate of occupancy if needed. So again, this is raising it comparative to the towns, and that's why you printed out something for us to all look at. Comparing us to other towns is appropriate, because when's the last time you changed?
2002.
So we're behind what the modifications are from other towns. We're just trying to get in alignment to make it more fair at this point. So if we were to change this, we would need to change via motion, to change the minimum fee for building fee from 15 to $35. And there's a second one, which is per thousand?
After the first.
After the first, going up to, from $8.26 per thousand to $10.26 per thousand.
Question? If there's, if there's more inspections after the first, is everyone saying 35?
Oh, no. This is, this is what we promote. Say you put in a wood stove and it costs 800 bucks. We're going to charge you $35. If I go up there and inspect it and it's wrong, we don't charge you anymore.
Okay. So it's just one time fee?
One time fee until it gets done.
We do make enough money on the single-family homes and the bigger jobs, where if we do have to go up and make a second inspection, it kind of covers that. Because we might take anywhere from 1,200 to 1,800 for permit fees on a new home, okay? And we may only do seven or eight inspections. So there is a little leeway there. We don't want to make the permits so expensive that people don't get permits.
That was my concern.
Kyle, have a question for the audience?
Yeah. City sewer to apply these codes, do they have to hook up?
If they're in 100 feet. If they're in 100 feet from the property line?
Just one hell of a half a meter.
It depends where the house is too, on the property. If they're like a mile into the woods, then they don't have to hook up.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
But like, if the house is right on the road and they're within 100 feet, they have to hook up for the sewer ordinance.
So they make 102 feet, may I?
No, they do. They do. Yeah. But if you're a half mile in the woods, they're...
And we have two of them, the old. To me, they haven't hooked up.
But I think down in the sewer, they're right now.
It's a pretty option. I'm not sure where it is.
So I'm, I'm, let's see.
Would you like to call him tomorrow?
Yeah.
What?
Would you like to call about that tomorrow?
Yeah, I could.
Okay. That would be helpful.
I mean, I have to pay for the sewer.
Right.
I had to work out, you know? And this costs big money. It was like a 30-year program.
That was when the original project went into place.
Right. And now these houses are going in. I'm 100 feet from the old houses.
It depends where they are.
Right. You call her tomorrow so she can verify what did or didn't happen.
Are they in the back of the phone? Yeah, they hooked up. Yeah. Greg Mopf's places. They hooked up.
Another question from the audience?
Yeah. I'd like to know where these numbers came from, because I get electrical permits all over the state, and I never pay more than $22 for the first thousand. Never, no.
This list right here, hopefully this list will show you the towns around us.
I wish I brought my cable, but I have.
They were on lower.
And a mistake still means they was grinding. Huge challenge. I did that.
There we put them in.
$22,000.
So we have to get them.
Any other discussion or questions?
I think you took over the one.
The motion is to change the minimum fee permit from 15 to 35, and then the change to $8.26 to $10.26 per thousand for the ones for anything out of that, after that.
I'll live with that. I'll make a motion to change the building permit fees from $15 to $35 with six, six thousand thousands, change them from $8.26 to $10.26.
Okay.
For a thousand.
Motion made, and I will second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item six, "Consider an act on pool repairs." We have, I've been waiting for a item to come in, is the pool pump. As everybody knows, we had a problem with the pump, so it was thought to order a new one. We did that. While we were waiting for that, there's a list of other things that we have found to be in need of repair. So I'm going to have our head maintenance talk about what those were to be found and see if we can reach some solution as to how, if we're fixing, and how we're fixing.
The first thing that is going are the filters. They were aged out at 10 years. They're now at 12. They're starting to fail now. The worry is, when we hook up a new pump with, it's going to have new pump pressure rather than 19-year-old pump pressure, it's going to increase the rate of that failure. Those pumps are, they're about, I think the quote, come in just over $10,000 to replace them. Has to be done. I mean, it's just something that they're either going to go right away, or they might, you know, they might pass a little while, but, I mean, we're going to have to put money away towards that. The heat coil that works with our new Dectron, it didn't, it's not part of the Dectron, so it didn't get replaced when they replaced that two years ago, but it's what heats the pool area itself, not the water. So when you come out of the water, it's not 60 degrees, it's close to the water temperature. That also keeps the humidity down, because if the water temperature and the air temperature are close to the same, you get a lot less humidity, and humidity is a huge problem in the pool area, which brings us to the vent fan. We have two vent fans in there that are, I'm not even sure how old, 20-some years at least. One is broken now, it has to be replaced. The other one, we replace belts on it quite frequently. We need to replace at least the broken one, because if the other one breaks, we have no way to move the air in that room. It just sits there, the moisture sits, and the ceiling falls off. I mean, I don't know if any of you have been in the pool area, but when it gets damp for a bit, first the paint bubbles, then it starts peeling, then the drywall take falls. We just replaced all that a year and a half ago? A year ago September. It just has to be done. It's something that really needs to be done. We also have an ultraviolet light which helps get the chloramines out of the pool. It keeps the bacteria down, and it helps with the smell, the chloramines that make the smell in the pool. It starts taking out. Ours is broken. We don't even have it, it's been broken for like two years. The problem is, it's a $14,000 item, so we've been dealing without it. What happens is, we use more chlorine, we have more smell in the pool, which means we end up more smell in the locker rooms and into the hallway, because it's all, it's all one room. Basically, I mean, it's just separated by, there's vents in between everything. It's gone, so we need it. The locker rooms also need some upgrades, showerheads, dividers in the men's locker room between the showers. I mean, it's set up like it was 50 years ago, just everyone showers together. Used to be, not a big deal in today's environment. It's not the way to go anymore. We also need a unisex changing room for people with their kids, because we've found that to be a problem when, you know, a woman comes in with her son, where do you change him? Especially when he starts getting a little older, or a father with a daughter, that's where we've more had the trouble. It's kind of tough for a guy to bring his young daughter into a men's locker room. I mean, more so for the other men in there. So we'd like to build a small room that can be, it's separate, I mean, it'd be, it's like in the ladies locker room, but kind of separated, because we'll build a couple of walls, some new doors, so they can do that privately. some new doors, so they can do that privately. The total for all these is, it's over forty grand. It's a lot of money. But it's something, it's got to be done. I mean, it's something that at some point is going to have to be done. So we either piecemeal it a little bit at a time, or I think Kevin and I talked about the best way is to just do it. I mean, just get it done in one shot. That way, we don't have to worry about it. We can advertise this upgraded pool, you know, no smell, cleaner locker rooms.
Thank you. So the questions that I would have would be, if we're to get approval to move forward with all of those items, is how long does it take to order some of these parts? And can some of these things be done as the other parts are waiting to come in? So pool, the filters, number one.
The filters are an in-stock item. And what he told me is unless he sold it that week. If he installed it somewhere else, it might take a few days to get it in. But I would say within a week, he can have them. The pool has to be closed down to do that. But for a day. It's not weeks. All of the other items, the ultraviolet light takes about three weeks to come in. Pool can be open to change that. The heating system, it's about three weeks to get the heater coil. But the pool, it's just going to be cold. I mean, the air is just going to be cold. It can be open to do that. Same thing with the vent fan, it can be open. He said a few weeks to come in. The pump, I told Kevin today, is here now. It's in, but we're waiting on the decision to decide, do we want to put it in and take the chance of breaking the pool again? Right away, you know, opening and then closing. Or do we want to do the filters at the same time?
How long, again, how long for the filters?
The filters, if I called him tomorrow, he can probably be putting the filters in this week.
Okay. But we have to go through the process. And the process is this, number one. This is forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents for the estimate. I'm going to go through each item, so we're very clear on this. So we can live without the heating coil and the heat actuator, just be a little cooler into the pool area. So we can order it, wait for it to come in, and then put it in.
Right. It's not, but, I mean, we were, actually, we haven't been running that for about the last three or four weeks that the pool is running anyways.
Okay. And that's roughly sixty-four hundred dollars for that.
Yes.
The in-vent fan, that full-room fan vent can be placed at any time, but you've got one that runs.
One that is working.
And that's thirty-four hundred dollars, thirty-four, eighteen, fifty. So that can be done as we go. The next one is the ultraviolet light. And again, you're removing the bacteria and the chloramines. So that one is listed as thirteen thousand oh seventy-two, but the ultraviolet light hasn't been running at this point? So we can still replace it as we go?
A year and a half, it hasn't been running.
The pool filters, like you said, can be put in right away as soon as we approve, go through the whole process, if we go through that process right now. And the final one is locker rooms. Now, the locker rooms are about four thousand dollars for the basic needs, for the divisions and the unisex changing room. And if you think about it, I mean, we have down there, I don't know how old that is, but those are all metal. And eventually, this team gets to rust them. And anybody can get scraped and hurt on that.
The new ones are a different vinyl, it's a vinyl composite product. It's actually made, you've made for boats. It's a marine polyboard.
So it won't rust?
It's not going to rust, it's not going to rot, it doesn't stain. It's made to get wet twenty-four-seven for however long.
Along those lines, if you take a look in the five-year capital plan, these are the items other than the locker room. These are the items that are in there for the next couple of years. So, any questions from the board?
Were some of those last year's line items? Like the UV light? I remember that coming up last year.
Yeah, so we have a little money in there for that. So I'm just making sure we have enough to go through the whole process of putting it in.
And how often, you're saying you have two exhaust fans, one's down, broken. The other one blows belts. How often are there going belts?
Every few months. It's not constant.
So have you checked the boiler line since then?
Yes. What it is, is the vents that are in there were made for a roof. And they turned them sideways. So over the years, all these years, everything is kind of just tilting. Everything is...
So your lines are off?
Right, but it's not the belts, it's the actual shaft.
Right.
The actual shaft, it's not, right.
You have to realign the shaft and pull the belts off.
Yeah, yes.
What's the material that changes for the ceiling in that room? So there keeps being an issue with the ceiling.
It was drywall.
So is it still drywall?
It is.
And then what kind of paint are they using?
Uh, it was, we use an exterior paint, because we figure it's rained on. That's why I made sure William's recommended for...
You should hopefully also check out a cross for that ceiling to be replaced, with something more than an upgrade that can handle that. Because this has been an ongoing issue since, I mean, not just the last administration, the one before.
Probably since it was a pool.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Well, yeah, I'm sure it is. And at some point, they put that ceiling in. When we redid it a year or so ago, I mean, there's only so much money available. So we just, we refixed the seams and scraped and put a couple of, you know, primer, a couple coats of paint again, just to, because, I mean, there was paint dropping into the pool. We talked about doing something with vinyl siding. They make vinyl socked it now.
They have so many different materials.
There are so many different things, but it is a huge square area, square feet. I mean, it's a lot of money. Just the product is a lot of money.
So maybe that could...
It's pretty much flooded at all.
It's exactly flooded at all. But there's some sockets involved too, because of the...
Other question?
What's, what's like the revenue and what's our losses on the pool? Where are we at with that at this point?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I'm going to say that we're about fifteen to twenty thousand behind.
And is that because of the hose, or is that because of the low revenue?
That's because of the low revenue. Because we didn't get enough people to come in to utilize the pool. Something we'd like to change, because we'd like to market it much, much better. And that's, we haven't done that. And that is a problem.
My family doctor said, even give me a prescription, come down and use the pool. Because I have osteo my knees and stuff. And you can go the insurance company for that. That's more than you're going to get off the people at work, you know, walk in. I mean, just make this a touch.
We're trying to restructure the fees and maybe so that it'd be more amenable to more people coming in. Trying to get, we talked about it last week, if, just so you know, we talked about actually making an offer to the highest in-town employer, which happens to be the Board of Education, to see if they could do a reduced rate to get more people to actually come in to use the pool. And the same thing, we were talking about how we would be able to package something up for larger employers as well in the town of Plainfield. Because that way, you get more people to consider coming in. The more used, the more money, and the better off we'll be.
But is our rec director going to work?
Yep.
And has she reached out to, like, the insurance?
We just started discussion this past week.
How many of our doctors in the area, in other towns, could help us? We're the only town around from Incoa.
It's, like, what do they call that? Low to no impact. And it's excellent on the joints. It's a very good way for rehabbing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, my recommendation in this is, other than double-checking all the numbers for the thirteen thousand that I think we put in for the ultraviolet? Because I did a check on that real quick. I don't know if we can just go online right with your phone or not? No?
Can.
Okay. I don't have the current budget with me, that's why I was going to ask that question. I do remember the thirteen thousand it was for the ultraviolet, but I wasn't positive. I know in this year's budget. Tom, do you happen to have that information?
I was going to say if I could, to think of this.
And I'm pretty sure it was close to the thirteen. But the whole package is forty-one thousand, four forty-six, nineteen. It represents a commitment to the town of Plainfield to put that back into running order and to make it a commitment for a few years. Because if you take a look at the five-year capital, on the five-year capital, for the next three years, the items that we just spoke of are all the items that we just mentioned here. So I would not anticipate any larger items to be replaced. Then it would be just a matter of maintenance items, like the roof and seeing if we can replace that.
Where, where are you going to be able to find the forty-one thousand?
Well, most of that money can come from the other, from the general, male, female, whatever it might be, the road group, highway supervisor position.
Okay.
So there's, there is money accessible.
There's money in the budget accessible up here in the town.
You've got the finance director right here.
No, she left.
Well, she left. You've got him on paper.
Yep.
Okay, right? And when, I think it was the dehumanize system that wrote that a few years ago. And that was a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that a car budget? This is a nice one, twenty-one.
Replace the pool filter. Nine thousand.
Okay. That's all. Five thousand, that's it.
Okay. And she helped the former, but we won't mention it again. They made a lot of hundred thousand dollars to do it. You only have to hear, or you got to figure out what he done or she done.
Did you get access to that? Because I see it here as nine thousand dollars. All right. The pool is a great asset for the town of Plainfield. It does a lot of things for us. I don't want to see it go away, but I want to make sure we're also not losing money every year to the point of having to worry about shutting it down. So marketing it is most important. And I'll be working with the rec director on how we actually put out marketing. And that's why the thought was, put it out to the town of Plainfield employers to see if they can actually want to join in for a reduced rate.
I think it's funny how many people actually don't even realize we have a pool.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Couldn't we put it out to the student center? Like some sort of student?
Well, we were talking about the family package for the employees and also something for the students as well. We work. So...
Waiting for something for the kids to do?
Yep. But that means adding more programs and adding more open time.
Because it's here, off school grounds, is there any way they could have a swimming team at the high school?
And when they tried it before, the issue was, I think, the length of the pool.
Oh, it's not?
Yes, not regulation.
I think, I think a lot of the problem with the, a lot of parents have used the pool for swimming classes and everything. The problem is the scheduling. It's usually only Saturdays. It's hard to get evening. They did it once or twice, but that was it. You couldn't get it. And a lot of kids, when you see those progress models spring, there's other things going on, they're playing softball, baseball. The kids are busy, and they just can't make the schedule. I think we'd see more if we all could get evening swimming classes for younger kids.
We're also reaching out to the Department of Finance to see what their schedule looks like, to try to compare those and add more classes at that point.
Are we reaching out to other towns?
Not yet.
Because I think that needs to be done. And my second thing is, is that my daughter works with adults with disabilities. And right now, they currently have a patient that she can't attend a daycare program or any outside services, but she loves to swim. So, you know, there are programs where they would even possibly be looking for like rentals, private time sessions for people with adult disabilities. I just think, I agree, the pool is a great asset. The fact that we're not marketing that better, that's a big issue. You know, especially in one of the last Board of Finance meetings, you referred to it as the money pit. And I don't, I don't think it's a money pit. I think it's, it's something that has not been, has not had enough exposure, enough marketability. I think it's something positive for our town that we're not promoting.
I apologize for the phrase. The phrase was that I hit you all at once, but all of this was presented to me.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Question, you mentioned the swim team. What about like a in-house swim team? Like a rec, you know, rec has rec basketball. They have rec soccer. What about rec swim, where it wouldn't matter if it was a different length?
I like all the ideas. If you wouldn't mind, just boarding them off to myself or Kelly at the rec? That'd be fantastic. Because the more ideas we have, the better we can actually help to promote it. So we do have nine thousand dollars allocated for this year for the ultraviolet light. Obviously, not enough, but it helps in some regards. The initial total was forty-one thousand, three thirty, three thirty-two. And we had a hundred and twenty-four dollars off, because I think we had a problem with the used or new pump.
I wrote the wrong number.
It's okay.
I wrote the number for the used instead of the new.
So the actual number was forty-one thousand, four forty-six, nineteen. If we take away the nine thousand, which we have currently in our budget available to spend immediately, what we're asking is to get a motion to go forward to the Board of Finance of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents to repair all the items that we just spoke of.
What did the pool burn in last year?
I'd have to get you those numbers.
You don't have to give them, raise them to the Board of Finance. And if you multiply that, you're thirty-one thousand dollars. You know, that'll tell you how many years that the pool would, before they pay for itself, you know?
Well, we've been having a problem with actually getting real numbers to see.
Yeah, but what we're just talking about here is, we want to bring more, and so you make more money.
Right.
Right, okay.
It'd be nice to at least have it evened out.
Right. In the past years, it's brought in a lot of money, but it never went back in the pool ever.
Um, no, there was actually a line item revenue for just the pool, pool revenue. And we estimate out every year how much it would be to run it. And unfortunately, we have issues like this that come up occasionally. But we're never taking in enough money, because we don't have enough people participating. So we estimate the revenue, and it always falls short.
That's easy to say. But after you go to your next board of meetings everywhere you want to budget, and you say, I want two members, you remember, someone that can go to the pool, or someone that should have went to the pool and it didn't work. That's, you know, that's...
Next year's budget, I've already, well, I've discussed it briefly, but I actually want to allocate an extra twenty thousand dollars to the pool, just to make sure we have enough time to get all of our programs that we're offering up to, up and running, and make sure we get the money coming in.
To me, the pool is like a rainy day. And one of your board of finance members a few years ago said, it ain't raining, it's four hundred thousand dollars. Let's give them the money. It isn't, and it isn't there. There's money sitting in the bank, and we just say, oh, we can't use it. So I'd spend some of it.
That's what I'm looking to try to do tonight, is to start that process, play a...
Okay, you know, I'm just wasting what I say, you know?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I would entertain a motion then to allocate thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents to the items for the pool repair, to bring forward to the Board of Finance.
I'll make a motion to...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and nineteen cents to the Board of Finance. Good consideration.
Put forward there.
Put forward.
I second that motion. Any other discussions? Every now and then, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
And entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I said, and adjourn to that. Thank you.